It's seven o'clock. I will begin by calling our October 2nd meeting to order. Welcome to our guest, our family's Fiona. If any of you are interested in speaking, please take the time to sign up. Otherwise, roll call. Joel?
Here.
Rod?
Here.
Leah?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Ethan?
Here.
Harley?
Here.
Adam?
Here.
I am here. Dr. Slernow?
Good evening.
And has our meeting been properly noticed?
Yes.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I believe this is the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would someone like to read our mission statement? I will. The Mount Orv area school district, in partnership with the community, is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society. Number two, approval of our agenda. We would like to make a request to move 7A to an after-school news. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? Motion by Adam, seconded by Leah. All those in favor of approving our revised agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Someone like to make a motion to approve our September 18th, 2023 board regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jim. All those in favor of our September 18th, 2023 board regular meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number three, starting off with our first student spotlight of the year. Ms. Johnson?
Oh, there you are. I lost you. I'm so excited. Fiona, do you want to come over by me? So I sent out a message to the entire ELCPC staff, and I share with them that we're looking for someone who just has done that little extra, those things that truly are being a Viking. And what was really rare about Fiona's nomination is she was nominated twice. And it wasn't by her teacher, although her teacher confirmed absolutely yes. So these were things noticed in small moments throughout the day in those unstructured settings where a teacher isn't guiding it. This naturally was happening. And so I'd like to share, she was nominated by Angie Brinkman and by Shelley Light, two of our parent professionals. Ready for me to share?
Okay.
From the first day of school, Fiona has not only helped a student in her class who sustained an injury over the summer, but she also is seen playing with students on the playground when she observes that they have no one else to play with. She always goes out of her way to be kind and helpful to everyone. Fiona always has a smile on her face. She has shown that she is respectful, responsible, and ready to take on any task given, which truly is Fiona.
Fiona, it's such a delight to have you here tonight. Can you introduce us to those special people who are with you, supporting you? Here's Dad, Lincoln, your brother, and Mama. Can we give them a round of applause, too?
God, it means it's over there, too.
Thank you for what you do, too, to support and enrich your class. It's remarkable. Can we give you a certificate that maybe you can hang in your bedroom and then little old Viking head mascot? That would be great next week's homecoming week. And would it be okay if we took a picture together? That's wonderful. And I'm going to ask Mr. Mertz, our primary center in ELCV, is on to join us. Let's go where there's some space. Can we bore a hole through?
Moving on, 3B, school news. Again, if you're interested in speaking this evening, if you can please sign up, there's a table right over there. 3B, school news. Ethan, would you like to begin?
Yeah, I'll cover a couple of things tonight. So just next week is our homecoming spirit week, which is very exciting for us. And then high school musical tickets are going on sale tomorrow at the end.
Thanks, Ethan, for reminding us about homecoming week next week. We have a homecoming float, the board does. It consists of Sarah Straka and her moped. And if anybody would like to join us, let us know, and we will be sure to notice the meeting publicly. What a tip of the hat to Ethan Fendrick. Ethan, you just recently received pretty impressive recognition. It's the academic honors from the college board's National Recognition Program. That doesn't come easily, and it's a result of, no doubt, your outstanding efforts, the support of a loving family, and a faculty and staff that set the conditions for you to be where you are. So let's give Ethan a round of applause. And also in celebration this week of Wisconsin School Board Appreciation Week, Governor Evers yesterday proclaimed this week to be School Board Appreciation Week, and as a small way of expressing our gratitude to you for your endless hours of support, there's a little bit of refreshments here for you as well tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else?
This Friday, October 6th, is the PTO costume ball. So it's from 6:00 to 7:30 at the IC. $5 per family. There'll be dancing, there'll be pumpkins, there'll be snacks, there'll be glow sticks and costumes.
Any other board members, school news? 3C, citizens' comments. I believe there are several people who would like to speak.
Weren't we moving that long before?
Oh, yes. Oh, goodness. Thank you. 7A, we have an international trip to France.
I believe that is me. Board, may I stand and speak from where I am out of ease of movement? Yes, I am proposing for the Mount Orv High School French Department, a international trip abroad, not this spring break, but the spring break of 2025, going to France and Belgium. It would begin on the northern coast in Brittany, travel across to the beaches of Normandy to visit the American Cemetery, before going to Paris and later to Brussels and Bruges in Belgium.
Do any board members have any questions? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Leah, to approve the international trip to France and Belgium in March of 2025. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Come back with photos? Now returning to 3C, citizens' comments. According to Board of Education Policy 187, public participation at board meetings welcomes input from our community about topics germane to education. We ask speakers to please provide their name and address for the record, and in accordance with board policies, speakers should please keep their comments to no longer than three minutes, so others who wish to speak can and the full business of the board can be accomplished. I will ask Dr. Slernow, please keep time and notify the speakers when he or she is approaching three minutes. Lastly, as you all know, the purpose of citizens' comments is for the board to collect input and not engage in a one-on-one dialogue. Who's up first?
Good evening, Amali Bilsey.
Amali Bilsey, I've taught English at Mount Orv High School since 2006. Now, I don't live in the district, but my husband and I chose to open and enroll our daughter, Tegan, here as soon as she started school. And now she's a fifth grader. What she's loved most about her Moho experience has been her teachers. At this year's back-to-school night, she had to make a special trip around the entire IC to hug each of her previous teachers. Teachers have made our district great, and every time we survey our community, hiring and retaining quality teachers has been the top priority. But it takes more than kids' hugs to retain excellent teachers. As a writing teacher, my mind works in metaphors, so bear with me. You know how whatever happened in your home was normal to you, but then you maybe went to a few friends' houses and realized, dang, I think my family might be a bit screwed up? And you start making plans to move out and wondering how much therapy will cost? By looking at districts around us, we're learning that our district isn't like the others. While our union may be newly certified, thankfully, we can learn from how our comparable districts have negotiated negotiations post Act 10. We've learned that meet and confer can start now, and the base wage should be each teacher's base salary. There's no reason to tell us, take this offer and act happy about it, or you won't get the really good mystery surprise. There's no reason to treat us like ungrateful children when neighboring districts have shown us a more respectful way. We all need to be partners in negotiations, as we are partners in every other aspect of running this district. Now, I've been to a lot of professional development in the last 20 years, and a few phrases from those trainings fill my thoughts now. When you know better, you do better. And people forget what you say, but they'll never forget how you made them feel. Want the best teachers to come to Mount Orv and say, stop taking the least cooperative stance that the law allows? Meet and confer now. Make our actual wage the base wage. Stop lawyering us and build trust. Make us feel valued. Our students are glad we're here. Show us that you are, too.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. I have been teaching, my name is Melissa Olmstead, and I live at 202 Center Avenue here in town, and I, too, have two children who are in the district and one who has graduated. I've been teaching in Mount Orv for 27 years. I've averaged about 27 students in each of my classroom classes, which means I have taught over 540 first and second graders, some of your children, in fact. You're trying to paint a picture that you are giving us an 8% increase, when in fact only nine new teachers will get that 8% based on your proposal. The other 185 teachers will get less. We are the only district from our list of comparables that is doing business this way. Every other district in our comparable group defines the base wage as the staff member's actual salary and discusses total compensation simultaneously. The WERC told our OEA rep and your lawyer that he would accept any definition our team came up with. You'll notice that staff is holding posters tonight. On our signs, each staff member has identified the actual percentage that they will receive off of our base wage. As you can see, under the proposed definition of base wage, I would be getting a 4.9% increase, not 8%. The district's proposed dollar amount is $3,477, which is $2,248 less than what an actual 8% increase would be on my salary. This is not how you show staff that you respect them, especially when all other comparables use actual salaries and talk about supplemental pay at the same time as base wage. If we use your definition of base wage, all of our future bargains will be based on $43,463 indefinitely. We've heard you're going to give us historical raises through meet and confer, but you have not shared any information about what that will look like. All of our nine comparable districts have a collaborative process to discuss total compensation with their teachers. All of our certified comparables do bargaining and meet and confer at the same time, so all ideas about compensation options can be discussed. Refusing to meet and confer and refusing to share any information beyond an increase calculated off the starting teacher's salary is disrespectful and unnecessary. In fact, it's like saying, we'll give you popcorn, but you can't have any butter. I have no guarantee about what my total increase will look like, none. Furthermore, staff having to come and publicly beg you to know all the pieces about this plan is embarrassing and divisive. If you value attracting and retaining staff like you claim, and what our community has said they want according to last year's survey, then show staff that you respect them and start the meet and confer process. Not one other district around here asks teachers to reach a base wage agreement without knowing their total compensation. It simply makes no sense to keep us in the dark like this. Finally, paying me 8% of the lowest-paid teacher is offensive and hurtful. A 27-year veteran should be given their raise based on having taught 540-plus students, not 20. Thank you.
Rebecca Seaman?
Over here. Hi, sorry. My name's Rebecca Seaman, and my address is 2715 Berdwood Pass in Cross Plains. I am a teacher in the Middleton Cross Plains Area School District, and I'm the president of our local teachers' union, and I've been part of our compensation committees and handbook committees for multiple years. In our district, the voices of teachers are welcomed and not silenced. We meet often with our district administrators and problem-solve situations that improve the learning conditions of our students and the working conditions of our staff. We partner on understanding issues, creating solutions, and communicating results. Our teachers appreciate that our district finds multiple avenues for collaboration. In our district, the union and administration work together around compensation. We all have the mutual goal to retain and attract high-quality teachers to support our students' learning environments. We know that to retain and attract, we need to be competitive in pay. And one step for doing that is to offer CPI increases based on each staff member's actual salary. Both of our last two years of increase followed this goal. When teachers felt seen and recognized, not just through an increase in salary, but also by having a seat at the table, the entire process is stronger. When teachers feel they can bring their worries and concerns through the union, and when there is the opportunity for the union work with the district on how salaries are refined and communicated, there is trust and retention.
Brittany Schultz?
I'm back here. Hello. My name is Brittany Schultz. I'm a current teacher at a neighboring district and a parent of three teachers that are here in the Mount Orv district. This is not my first time here. I've already come to talk to you all about the salary discrepancies that we're seeing between the neighboring school districts and Mount Orv. When sharing this previously, I noted how, over the course of my career, I'm going to make much more than a quarter million dollars more than I would if I was in here at Mount Orv. I come from a district where teachers and the union have a voice in compensation conversations. This year, my district gave 6% to each and every cell in the salary schedule, while giving an additional 2% step movement, giving an 8% actual increase on my salary. So I've gotten a raise since our last conversation. This was done with unanimous approval by our Board of Education, not just limited to the base wage, because experience matters and should be valued. In speaking to student teachers and those new to the profession, this is no longer a destination district like I want it to be for my children. This is evident when you compare the candidate pools for your open positions. It took years for this to happen, and some of the board members here may feel like this isn't their fault because you weren't here when teachers began being slighted. But right now, you have the opportunity and need to make the change. When looking at the numbers, let's look at those who have been here longer, because those are the ones who are not being fairly compensated. Looking at a teacher who's been here for 17 years, they would make over $14,000 more per year. That would equate to over $212,000 more in salary in their remaining 15 years of their career. For a teacher who's been here more like 27, over $20,000 a year, giving them over $300. These are significant differences. What is holding these talented teachers here anymore? My district's top teacher salary is now $110,492, while yours is capped at $80,408. In one year, your most qualified will make $30,000 less than at a district eight miles away. To go back to what was said on your Facebook page in November of 2022, on the referendum FAQ page, money would be spent on the main priorities, attracting and retaining staff. Mount Orv voted with heavy support from your teachers, believing this would happen. Then, on November 8th, your page posted, quote, "Vikings, unofficial results of the Mount Orv Area School District Operational Referendum demonstrate that our community continues to support our beautiful children and the mission-oriented people who educate/care for them. Thank you," end quote. So the community wanted to support the children and those mission-oriented people, but it doesn't appear a significant amount of what was going to be spent on teachers like this was promised. As taxpayers, we deserve transparency. Your teachers deserve to know they will get at least 8% on their wages. You shouldn't ask them to reach a base wage agreement without knowing total compensation, similar to how your administrators knew and got 9% on theirs. Give your constituents transparency and your teachers what they deserve.
John Schifner?
Thank you. My name is John Schifner. I live at 100 T R Court here in Mount Orv. I am a parent of a high schooler, a middle schooler. I'm a former parent and applied arts sub for EC through second, so early childhood through second grade, and the daughter of a retired teacher not in this district. Five years ago, I stood in this room and shared my personal story as our community grapple to support the delicate mental health of our students. At that time, our district emphatically committed itself to improving mental health overall, going so far as to create a committee and adopt the slogan altogether. I am dismayed that I now stand here having to fight for exactly who all are good. Make no mistake, this is about money. It is about much more than money. Our teachers encourage, guide, uplift, and validate our children. They help teach social skills, friendship navigation, manners, self-acceptance, self-motivation, inclusion, and empathy. The vast majority do this exceptionally well, even though these things are not in their job descriptions. It's difficult to fill someone else's bucket when your own is empty. Appreciation, validation, recognition, and commensurate pay are important components of mental, emotional, and even physical health. Yet our teachers are currently fighting for all those things as they bargain for their work. Last year, this community voted to increase the compensation that these women and men receive because we appreciate and value them. We stand here tonight for a second time, supporting them to make sure that the money goes where we voted to put it. We often read or hear the words, "I'm proud to be a Viking," and I hope you are, too. It's high time the powers that be in this district stopped talking about it and start it.
Nathan Johnson?
Stepping my way up here. My name is Nathan Johnson. I'm a teacher in the Oregon School District. I've been the lead negotiator for the Oregon Education Association for eight years. I'm here tonight to share with you perspective on how the Oregon School District and Oregon Education Association engage in negotiations and meet and confer. Annually, when we are engaging in discussions as to changes to compensation, teachers have a full voice and full transparency in every aspect of compensation. First, we do not settle our collective bargaining agreement on base wage increases until we have also met and conferred on overall changes to our compensation plan and supplemental pay, some of which of the compensation plan will apply as the distribution of base wages. Second, the district provides transparency as to the overall district budget and the cost impact of planned increases to teacher compensation. Finally, the calculation of money subject to collective bargaining is based on a definition of base wage as the existing salary of each teacher. When the Oregon School District created a new educator compensation system after Act 10, teachers will full partners in that committee studying and making recommendations on a new system. When these recommendations were brought forward, the Oregon Education Association were full partners with district administration and the school board via meet and confer in making adjustments to the final plan, then pursuing a referendum to fund the new plan. Beyond discussing compensation, the Oregon Education Association is treated as a full partner in other matters related to employee working conditions. Every year, the process in developing changes to the employee handbook includes conversations between the district administration and OEA. Once changes are proposed, district admin, the school board, and the OEA are equal partners in meet and confer over proposed changes. In recent years, after collaborative conversations and compromises, there has been consensus when we have reached final handbook, there has been consensus when we have reached final compensation, and all three parties have fully agreed in the changes to be implemented before they were finalized. This productive and open relationship between the district and teachers doesn't cost anything. It has served to build trust and partnership between parties. When mid-career teachers come to Oregon, they often cite this collegial, collaborative involvement of teachers as one key reason they chose to leave other districts for Oregon. If your goal is to recruit and retain high-quality teachers in Mount Orv, you, too, can build this kind of relationship, where teachers are a valued, equal partner in conversations around compensation and working conditions. When they work in open collegial manners together, teachers, administrators, and the school board can make a district where teachers want to teach, families want to live, and everyone can grow together.
Hello, I'm a pre-graduate child here in Montana. So hello, I'm an employee. I've been here for seven years as a fourth-grade parent professional. I'm a taxpayer, and I'm a parent. I currently have two kids in the middle school. I see every day the wonderful things our teachers accomplish, and they deserve better for you. They give tirelessly to our children, to my children, and to their children. So I can't fathom why you think the administration deserved a 9% pay increase based off of each of their current individual salaries, but that our teachers don't deserve that very same thing. It is a slap in the face to our teachers, and especially to our veteran teachers. Teachers who are in their classrooms every day, educating, connecting the dots, comforting hurt feelings or a knock on the knee, helping kids handle big emotions or navigate social issues, or helping them learn how to tie their shoes. They keep reassuring their students that they will get that math concept, reteaching it to them, and then celebrating with them when they accomplish that goal. They provide snacks when the students don't have one from their own pockets. They are asked to accommodate the many and varied needs of students all in one classroom, while being given less and less to do that with, and often without any additional support that they really need and could really use. So I'd like to ask you to please appropriately and fairly compensate our teachers, who do the hardest work of all in this district. They deserve it. My children deserve it. Your children deserve it. Because I have to wonder, what happens to their education when the awesome teachers we have leave? Because of your unwillingness to compromise, share information, or even treat them with basic fairness and human decency, what happens to the children of this district, who are, unfortunately, going to be the ultimate losers here?
Hi, Davis.
Thanks for having me. I've got a lot of jokes built into this. I'm not sure it's the right environment. My name is Davis Sweng, and my wife and I are both teachers here at Mount Orv High School, and a taxpayer voter and a parent. I'm also an alumnus. I grew up in Mount Orv and attended Mount Orv schools from kindergarten on. Not only are some of my colleagues former teachers of mine, but I have their children now in my classes. On top of it all, for the first time, a former student of mine is now my own daughter's second-grade teacher. Which is crazy, I feel like. I'll say that my former teachers are old, young. My name, people seated at the table here, six of you have had or currently have students in my classroom. If you throw in my sister-in-law, who's also a teacher at the high school, I don't think you can get through high school without having one of us in one of our classes. It'd be hard for us to find a family more intertwined with Mount Orv School District than ours, which is why I'm here. I'm here before you did advocate for teachers and ultimately for myself, which is not something I'm particularly comfortable with. I'm from a stoic Norwegian family, and I've been taught to put my head down and deal with it. But I can't look at my kids, and I can't look at your kids in my classes and tell them to stand up for what's fair if I'm not willing to do the same. It seems we've not been able to successfully negotiate a contract primarily due to one issue, the definition of base wage. The board currently demands that we accept a base wage defined as the starting teacher's salary, while MHGA insists that we define the base wage as our actual teacher's salary. For context, no other comparable districts use the starting teacher's salary as the base wage. All other comparable districts, you factor in its actual teacher's salary, and that is what we're asking to be around Mount Orv. I've got 20 good years of teaching left in me, God willing, and I'm being asked now to sign a contract establishing the starting teacher's salary as the base wage, not just for this year, but indefinitely. So that 10 years from now, from 20 years from now, when we are negotiating contracts, Mount Orv is stuck with the lowest definition of base wage, while all other comparable districts factor in the teacher's actual salary. I'm sure you can appreciate that I can't feel good about signing off on that. It seems unreasonable, and not just for myself.
It seems unreasonable, and not just for myself, but for my former teachers who've been here for 30 years or more. It's really my daughter's second-grade teacher I'm thinking about. It's her first year teaching, and I, how can I be expected in good conscience to agree to this contract establishing the starting teacher's salary as the base wage in perpetuity? And then go to my parent-teacher conference and sit down with her and look her in the eyes and know that 25 years from now, when I retire and all of you are off the board, this decision, this precedent, will still impact her career. I want her to stick around. I want any former student interested in education to feel like Mount Horev is a viable option, that Mount Horev is a community that respects and values teachers, and defining the base wage as the starting teacher's salary is not the way to do that. When we as a community voted on the operation referendum, the biggest line item was to attract and retain quality staff. That is what the community voted on, to attract and retain quality staff. That line should be on the chalkboard at every negotiation meeting, because that is the essential outcome of this. So I urge you, please, keep that in mind in future contracts.
So once I'll be brief, probably maybe seven. My name is Brooke Running. I live at 228 Valley View Road here in Mount Horev. This is my 17th year as a school counselor and my seventh year with the Mount Horev Area School District. I have two children that attend Mount Horev schools, and they have benefited greatly from the knowledge, experience, and diligence of these fine people, and I'm very grateful for that. It's insulting that these individuals who are so crucial to my children's formative years are being treated with such disrespect. The district is able to meet and confer with MHEA about supplemental income and is choosing not to. It's a choice. This disrespect occurs in no other district in our comparables. As an employee who helped pass the referendum and a citizen of Mount Horev who voted to pass the referendum, it is disappointing that the teachers haven't been made aware of the supplemental pay increases through the meet and confer process. It is public knowledge that most of our administration was given the 9% increase on their actual salaries, yet we are being given an 8% increase on the entry-level salary. This would make my salary increase 6.3%, which does not keep up with inflation. It is embarrassing, offensive, and degrading to have to stand before you in a public forum to not only explain why this is disrespectful to staff, but to also have to defend our right to something all districts in our comparables do. I teach students how to work together and compromise. It's time the district does the same with its professional staff. The district could and should be telling its staff and community what is available in total compensation and is choosing not to. Teaching is the profession that creates all other professions. It's time to show respect to your hard-working teachers and to start the meet and confer process alongside our base wage negotiations. Thank you.
Hi, Melissa Piscatelli.
Hi. Thank you. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I think this is awesome. My name is Melissa Piscatelli. I'm a sixth-grade teacher at the Mount Horev Middle School. This is my 32nd year of teaching, 28th have been in the Mount Horev Area School District. My husband and I live in the community. We have two awesome, amazing sons who are a product of this school system. I want to thank the negotiations team, Dr. Slarno, all the board members, especially those three who've served on the negotiations process, Jessica Ergony, Jim Myers, Rod Heiss. Thank you for the time you've invested, and thank you for the time you will continue to invest in this process. It would seem, as Davis already spoke to, that one of the biggest challenges in this process has been the interpretation of base wages. To be sure, the wording of 2011's Act 10 is ruckety at best. When Act 10 was passed, there was confusion about the definition of base wages. To resolve that confusion, the WERC, the Wisconsin Employment Relations Commission, published a temporary ruling, which expired after six months. The temporary ruling defined base wages as the lowest cell on a salary schedule. Since that ruling has expired more than a decade ago, no legislation or court ruling has created a new standardized definition of base wages. The board has been advised to resurrect an archaic 2011 definition of base wages. In the personal opinion of Peter Davis, the counsel at WERC, he suggested that using the lowest cell on the salary schedule was an interpretation most in keeping with the original intent of the statute. Yet that same legal counsel, WERC, has acknowledged many times over, including last week, that any definition of base wage that the two parties can agree on is illegal. If the district is indeed insisting on defining base wages as the base wage or the lowest full-time teacher salary, why would teachers agree to that? Why would our district use a different definition of base wages than any local comparable district or any other district in Dane County for that matter? Why would 180-plus teachers in our district accept a raise based on the salary of nine teachers in our district? Why is the board choosing to honor the personal opinion, not the legal ruling, just the personal opinion, of a single-state bureaucrat more highly than established practice? The district is pushing forward in ways that are outside of the mainstream. Hesitance in coming to the table with MHEA, the definition of base wages, refusing to share details about supplemental pay, not meeting and conferring concurrently with negotiations, each of these decisions is causing unnecessary conflict. It is time for the Mount Horev Area School District to come into the mainstream, reduce these unnecessary conflicts, negotiate on the base wages as defined in 2023, not 2011.
Stacy.
Hi there, Stacy. My third, 35th year of teaching, 32nd year here in Mount Horev. Can't believe I'm saying that. Sounds like a lot. So I would like to start with letting you all know, and I do live in Mount Horev, but I have two kids who graduated from here. I would like to start with letting you know all the things MHEA did to help get the referendum passed. A subgroup formed and met on several occasions to get yard signs up and around the community. They also wrote postcards, emails, and texts to people in the district who hadn't voted recently, and made phone calls to get people out to vote. Individuals also spent time informing their friends and neighbors about the referendum. Many used their social media to help spread the word. All of this surely helped to get this referendum to pass. This fall, we learned the custodial staff, administrative assistants, and paraprofessionals received a big bump in their pay. Those raises were around $5 an hour. For a full-time staff member, this is about a $10,000 a year increase, deservedly so. I think every teacher here would agree. They deserve every penny of that. $10,000. Admin received anywhere from $8,000 to $15,000 depending on their salary. Now let's talk about the teachers. You're offering an 8% raise based on the lowest-paid teacher's salary. This is just under $3,500 for each teacher. People move to this district because they hear great things about our schools and teachers. Ultimately, teachers make your district great. Teachers. Teachers have the most direct impact on how well students perform. Teachers. Because of my role as an instructional coach, I get a chance to see just how great the teachers are in this district. You are offering the least amount of money to the people who have the biggest impact on our students. The teachers. This negotiation cycle is your opportunity to make a statement about your teachers. The people in this district spoke loudly when they voted to pass the referendum. The number-one priority was to attract and retain quality teachers. This year, we hired 20, 40 teachers, about 40 staff altogether, and we still have positions unfilled. You have asked us to trust you and take an 8% raise without knowing anything else, but only the lowest-paid teachers will actually see that. Some of this is, you've heard. This is nine out of 193 teachers, so 184 of us will get less than 8%. My guess is another of you get raises based on the lowest-paid person in your professions. Other professions don't do that. Even other districts in Dane County don't do that. Someone like me at the top of the salary will get 4.3%. That doesn't keep up with districts like Verona and Middleton, who offer 8% based on individual salaries, or Monroe, who offered 6% based on individual salaries, and my 4.3 won't even keep up with inflation. Asking MHEA to trust you and take the 8% raise, which I have said only goes to nine teachers, and not telling us anything else is really not setting the stage for a trusting relationship. We're being told the negotiations and meet and confer can't occur at the same time, but other districts are doing this. Can we please conduct our negotiations like other districts around us to be competitive and to avoid all this unnecessary conflict?
Hey, over here. Voices faltering after a day, but I'm Susan Messman. I've been teaching here 30 years at Mount Horev One. I have a daughter who's graduating and so grateful to see that so many faces. I have a son who's at the transition center. In my 30 years here, I've seen this district be at the lowest levels of teacher-paying compensation. Unfortunately, I'm a consistent thesis. When I was hired in 1993, Mount Horev was the fifth lowest district in the state for pay. It has seemed like an uphill battle the entire time I've worked here. There were some years we'd make some headway, but always to fall back. Back then, we even had a pay scale that didn't allow for you to advance without a master's degree. So my husband, who teaches in a neighboring district, enough, needed to decide who should get that master's degree first. It was obviously me, as our district didn't have any other avenue for pay. We scraped together $12,000, which prone to adopting our BAE, and it was an 18-month master's program, with so many Mount Horev teachers feeling stuck. Nineteen of us had to go through that. During that 18 months, the district decided to restructure the pay scale. QEO was also coming in at that time, but they took from our lanes to boost the pay at the beginning. What would have taken me two to three years to earn that master's degree, getting close to five, this was very disrespectful, and it seems to me again to better teachers, very badly. Now to say that we have to take base wage as the lowest staff member is a slap in the face. That would be half the raise I've earned by serving. I've already been hit hard by this district once, and I stuck through it. If you do this again, that shouldn't happen. Building up the lower base of the salary scale because we're so privileged is not being adjusted for those in the middle or the end. It should be done across to be equitable for all. And to say that the 8% we've already earned is very misleading. It barely is a cost-of-living adjustment, and very few of us will actually receive that. The district also slipped in some language about insurance into our contract, kind of under the radar for many people. That will also likely come back to haunt us and take money from our pockets, if not this next year, in the near future. That was a new restriction added that did not have to be. This cannot happen to the teachers of this district again. We've dedicated our careers to the children and the community and deserve to be treated with dignity and respect. We deserve nothing less than what surrounding districts offer. Why would Mount Horev, why would you think that your teachers deserve that? You all say you're proud to be a Viking, but for the first time in 31 years, I'm feeling like I'm not. I feel disrespected, toyed with, and lied to. Our school board has not done their job in being first and being equalized first. Please do what you can do, what you should do, and help us save this district.
Barb Winger-Worth.
That's me. Hi. My name is Barb Winger-Worth, and I taught here at one point. I live in Blue Mounds at 11,000 Bliss Street, and my children attended here. I now teach in Verona. I'm a co-president to the BAE there and a member of the negotiations committee for four years. I understand that there's disagreement about how transparent the district needs to be with regard to the process of allocating funds for salaries and other compensation. I'm here to tell you how we do it in Verona and why that's important. In our district, the union is a full partner. We are invited into everything. If they have to make a change in something, they call and say, "Barb, bring Shane over. We need to talk to you. We need to figure this out together." And then they send us the memo that's going to go out to the whole community and add our names to the bottom, too. We work on everything together. And so why is that important? What does that do? Well, what it does is it brings all the ideas to the table, because no one person has the right idea. When you have top-down leadership, you hand tie yourself. When you talk to your people, these are the people that know what needs to happen. So at Verona, as staff, we feel like we're being listened to. We're valued. We're part of the process. Because we're a team, we're a team, and at the table together, we have the financial officer, the superintendent, the director of HR, and our full negotiation team, which includes a OEA, Region 6 rep. When our ideas are proposed, we work them out, and we always fall back to what do we agree on? When we get to that, then some of us have to compromise, but it is not top-down. From what I've seen here, you're doing exactly the opposite. My question is why? Here's what you're putting out to the community, and let's face it, to the pool of area educators. Everybody watches every other district. There's an internet, and it's not, it's not that hard, okay? So you don't want to be that, but the optics right now are, Mount Horev does not value or trust their professional staff enough to have them at the table. And I say professional, because statewide, 70% of the teachers have master's degrees. What other profession do you know that's like that? Educators and staff know what the other districts are doing. Do you think anybody would recommend a young teacher or a veteran to come to Mount Horev to be treated like this? Everybody talks. They'll be like, "No, go down to Verona." Somewhere they're giving you total years of service, whether you were in a private school, a public school, or teaching abroad. Finally, I wanted to say, I want to appeal to you to work collaboratively. You can and should talk total compensation and salary increases, and most importantly, you can and should bargain as well as meet and confer at the same time. Everybody else is doing it. Thank you.
Carol Gilz.
I am Carol Gilz. I live at 1305 Scarlet Street, 1 block from the district office. I have two children who graduated from here, and I would like to say that our discussion is continually being brought back to 8% CPI. We can't give you anything. We're not asking for more. We're asking for our fair compensation. When CPI goes down to 1% or 2%, we move down a step in our district. I won't be able to afford to stay, and that makes me sad because my community's one of them, and I like it. If you base the wage on the first-year teacher, you're disrespecting my 15 years of experience. My 15 years that I use today when the fire alarm is pulled in our building, and I have 20 students, very, very, very different. I've given a lot of time and dedication to the district, this town, and the children in the community, and I would like to.
Tracy Lang.
Right here.
Hi, Tracy.
So a lot of points will be reiterated, as you've heard, but hello, school board members and Dr. Slarno. My name is Tracy Lang, 14th Ave, Green Valley Road. I teach second grade at the primary center. I also live in Mount Horev, and I have three children who all graduated from this district. I'm so thankful for all the teachers, administrators, and support staff who help my children thrive and graduate from Mount Horev. This is why it makes me so sad to have to speak here tonight. I love teaching in Mount Horev. I have devoted my entire career to this school district and community. Until this current negotiation, I have always felt respected by the school board. I don't feel that way right now, and I sincerely hope that changes, and I can feel that I'm respected once again. right now, and I sincerely hope that changes, and I can feel that I'm respected once again. Because of the referendum passing, our paraprofessionals and support staff received a twenty percent-plus increase in pay. They completely deserve it. We could not function in the classroom without them. I'm also glad that our administrators received a raise, as they, too, work very hard every day. It is worthwhile to note, however, that the administrators received a nine percent raise on their actual salaries, which is what should happen with their raises. I do not begrudge administrators for getting a raise on their actual salaries. But our teaching staff is asking for the same respect the administrators received, an eight percent raise on our actual salaries. The district and school board is offering an eight percent raise on the base wage, which we are defining as a starting teacher's salary. You cannot say you're offering an eight percent raise to all staff. This is misleading. On New York proposal, only nine teachers are actually getting an eight percent raise. I am a teacher with thirty years of experience. I have a master's degree plus twenty-four credits beyond my master's degree. I have taught six hundred and fifty-nine students. I counted them all. I deserve to get an eight percent raise on my actual salary, not on the salary of someone who has never taught before. My husband works in the private sector. He says it is unheard of to give an employee a raise based on the lowest salary in the company. No one does that. You, the school board, need to define the base salary as our actual salary. To ask the teachers to accept anything else is disrespectful and frankly, demoralizing. According to the district, you say you have a generous supplemental pay package that you will tell us about in the meet and confer portion of negotiations. But before you share that package, you are telling us that we have to accept your proposal of an eight percent raise on the base wage of a starting teacher's salary. Trust us, you tell the teachers. How am I supposed to trust you and vote yes on the base wage proposal when I don't even know what you are offering for the supplemental pay package? If you want me to vote on a base wage offer, then share that supplemental pay package you are proposing with us teachers. There is nothing that prevents you from beginning meet and confer to share the total teacher compensation package. There are nine districts in Dane County we are using to compare compensation. All nine districts do beginning and meet and confer at the same time to discuss a total pay package. Mount Horvath should do the same thing. I have suggested that because Mount Horvath just recently certified as a union, that we need to go back to 2011 and keep bargaining and meet and confer separately. That makes no sense at all. I don't teach the way I did in 2011. I use best practices from 2023. Why would we go back twelve years and start over? I know the district and school board want the same thing as teachers. Let's work together and compromise. Please show the staff that you value us. Please begin meet and confer now and define the base wage as our actual salary. Please share information about total compensation and how many dollars are available in salary increases with our negotiations team. They represent me. Please help the staff feel respected once again. Thank you.
Tina Mauer.
That's me. Hi, I'm Tina Mauer, 813 Feather Sound Drive, Verona. I actually was not going to get up and talk tonight. I'm kind of nervous, but then I saw one of my students I've had for two years over there in the corner. Shout out, Cora Faber. Thank you for coming. Yes. So, I'm a fifth-grade teacher at the IC. Eleven years ago, I started my career as a teacher in Mount Horvath, and I've had the pleasure of teaching the children of people in this room and people on this board. There's a reason that I've stayed here. I love it here. I hope to stay here. I love the IC. I love the community that we've created at the IC, and I love coming to work at the IC every day. I love my co-teachers. Shout out, Anna Dower. You make my life there worthwhile, and I love the kids we teach. Truly, I pour my whole life into what I do in that building, sometimes at the neglect of myself or my own family. Unfortunately, it's become clear that both financially and on principle, that this district is no longer serving their staff appropriately or respectfully. I don't need to go over the comparables again. It's been done. My personal situation is that I have two bachelor's degrees in education, a master's degree in education, and over a decade of teaching experience, and I make the same amount of money as an assistant manager at QuickTrip, according to the sign on their door. Imagine my chagrin when I learned that the administration had been the first to get a raise on their actual salaries. It's embarrassing. The board's refusal to share any information with staff, as well as the refusal to budge on the base wage definition, which is perhaps the most embarrassing, is astounding and perplexing at this point. Never would I dream to be paid on someone else's salary, let alone the lowest-paid salary available. I told my husband this, who also works in the private sector, and he laughed. No professional would expect this, and it would be considered ridiculous in any other professional setting. After all the information we have received from MHA and the board, it's a complete mystery to my co-teachers and I why this is happening and why the board continues to make these decisions that seem to be so detrimental and disrespectful to the staff that they represent, because I really don't want to believe that that's the case in your minds. There's a very precarious line being treaded here. You already have and will continue to lose quality educators if you keep going down this path. Personally, one from our team that we were very upset to lose at the beginning of this year. People won't stick around, as others have said, when there are so many better offers just a few miles down the road. And I don't think I need to explain to you what low morale and high teacher turnover will do to a school district and its outcomes. I know my value. I know my co-teacher's value, and you will continue to lose staff to districts that choose to recognize and respect that value. The worst part in all this that sticks out like a sore thumb to me is that the real detriment will be the children of this district, just like the one I teach right over there. Please do the right thing and respect us enough to share relevant information and pay us what we deserve on our actual salaries.
Thank you for joining us for all of your comments. We'll move on to number four, personnel transactions.
Motion to take five. Take five?
Motion to take five. Give me a second.
Okay. Four A, recommendations and employee status matters. Is there anything for us to note?
Just an addendum to my board members.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Joel, to approve our personnel transactions. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number five, our consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull out? One thing to note is the high school music trip. The dates have changed since when they first came to us.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Adam, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number six, discussion items. Our committee member reports. Rod, would you like to begin with buildings, grounds, and transportation?
I would. The Building, Grounds, and Transportation Committee met on September 25th. All members were present, and we had some guests as well, which was terrific. Ethan and a colleague of his gave a presentation on behalf of the Mount Horvath Sustainability and Natural Resources Committee. They shared their desire to work with the school district to reduce energy consumption and the carbon footprint, and we undoubtedly will extend that conversation. Brian Toth gave us an update on some operational needs. The department is currently operating with two open AM routes and three open PM routes. As a point of comparison, the department started the year with one AM and two PM open routes. This is sort of interesting. Brian told us that the Transportation Department will have completed a total of fifty-two trips, both athletic trips and field trips, and that the fleet has driven just over sixteen thousand miles since September 1st. Dave reported that there were two custodial positions that will be open. He also reported on projects related, reported at last month's meeting. There are a number of other projects that have been completed or are in process, Dave told us. And finally, Dave is working with the lock system supplier, say that five times fast, to give the district the ability to lock down individual buildings at need.
Thank you, Rod. Any questions for Rod? Jim, would you like to give the Finance Committee a report?
Yes, absolutely. We met on September 12th, and at that time, we did not have any new donations to accept. We had a special guest, Brian Brewer from Baird, as you may know, and he's, Brian's always very helpful in preparing for future debt and the future mill rate management. So, we had a great discussion with him. As we do every finance meeting, we always discuss our calendar. Some noteworthy dates that some have come, some not quite yet, but some noteworthy dates that we discussed were the third Friday count in September. Yesterday, October 1st, the release of Equidite Equalized Property Values by the Department of Revenue, and then the official state aid certification by the DPI will be on October 15th. From there, our next meeting is October 16th at 4:30 PM.
Any questions for Jim? Thank you, Jim. Adam, do you want to give the Safety and Wellness Committee a report?
Yeah, absolutely. We had a really, a great visit from a representative from Bridging Brighter Smiles, which is an organization that provides dental services to kids who qualify, or I guess anyone, but it's identified through kids who are, I mean, it's identified through kids who are receiving free and reduced lunch. Took me a long time to get through that. But they do some great work here, and they want to get some better exposure in the district, and we've talked about different ways of doing that, of just letting families know that these services are available. They do oral screenings, dental cleanings, fluoride, sealants, kind of the whole thing, and they refer to dental offices for items that they can't handle. So, really great service, and we want to work with them to get some more visibility. And I think, I'm sorry, I thought I said something. There was one other item note there, just talking about our restraint programs. We are one of only two or three districts in the whole state that are taking our whole staff through a de-escalation program. Really important in terms of student safety, student self-safety, so it's great that we've made that commitment. That's what I had.
Thank you, Adam. Any questions for Adam? Adam, do you also have the Village Park Rec and Forestry Commission? Have you all met?
I would, but I was not present for that last meeting, so I have to update at the next one.
No problem. Moving on to number seven, action items. Letter B, consider approval of legislative advocacy letter in support of Assembly Bill 435, Senate Bill 429, school start date currently.
Yes, so this was something we talked briefly about at the last Community Legislative Engagement meeting. There is a bill, a bipartisan bill, has bipartisan support right now, to allow some more flexibility in when the school start date can happen in the state of Wisconsin. Historically, there have been a couple of attempts at this bill to remove the September 1 limit that has not gone anywhere. This one tries to take a more middle-of-the-road approach, and it basically allows one week earlier with a requirement that if you choose to come in the Monday before, you still have to give off the Friday before Labor Day. Given that it's something better than nothing, and gives some local control back and some flexibility, we thought it would be a good opportunity for an advocacy position. So, the letter here that you see, Dr. Salerno hopes draft, and we're here to get your feedback and potential approval.
So, Carly, just to recap, it's one week before and the Friday before Labor Day, is still?
Yeah. I think, given it is, the bill's been introduced, it's been referred to the Education Committee. There has not been a hearing on it yet, given that there is some bipartisan support, though, and that there is some more, that it is more of a compromise approach. I think there's more potential for it to advance than previous attempts.
Any other questions or comments?
I would just add, from a student perspective, advanced placement courses, the test is always in that one week of remain, no matter what time you start. So, a better start date, an earlier start date is always way better for us. So, it's a really great idea for us. I noticed in the letter, I just thought I'd mention it again.
I think the letter falls in line with our stance on that committee, that anything we can do to encourage local decision-making when it comes to the business of the school district is important.
Yeah. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. I'll second that.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jim, to approve our advocacy letter for Assembly Bill 435 and Senate Bill 429. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seven C.
Excuse me, just real quick, Madam President. Could I please send around then a draft of that letter and ask that you please sign that? I can send a pen with it, too, if need be. Thank you so much.
All right. Seven C, consideration of Board Procedure 150P, Board Governance Role and Responsibility. So, as you may remember, this is a new procedure. This is a new procedure. Several of us, Rod, Leah, Carly, Jim, worked on this, along with some of the other work that we were doing. This is in line with our Policy 150. This is a self-governing policy. It is not a process for public use. The intent of this is that this will be used in rare instances, and although it specifies the process, you can see that almost in each instance, the process is have a conversation, have a conversation, make sure you're gathering the information, and communicate with the board, communicate with who the individual is. So, I don't know if there's anything else that anyone would like to add who helped to work on this. Motion to approve.
I'll second that. Thank you.
What? No, you're okay. I'm not. I'm over it.
Okay, let's start getting some...
Well, actually, that's not true. I can tolerate it.
Just in case. Motion...
It actually did have one question, sorry. I was passing the letter back. So, this is going into procedures as opposed to...
Correct. It is not policy. It is a procedure for the school.
That's all I want to clarify.
Yep. All righty. Motion by Leah, and is seconded by Adam, to approve Board Procedure 150P, Board Governance Role and Responsibility, addressing breaches of Board Responsibility and in unlawful norms. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All righty. Seven D, consideration of settlement offer for government and any claims against Altria. Dr. Salerno?
Good evening again, board members. You may recall, the board entered into a settlement agreement with another outfit, Juul. This is the second settlement offer that has been provided to school districts that have been joining on the class action, and the amount of money received in this settlement is significantly less than was received through Juul, and that's because Altria is a much smaller outfit than obviously is Juul. Nonetheless, any money derived from this process would be used to continue to educate students about the dangers of vaping and other health and wellness-related initiatives.
Any other motion for motion to accept the settlement?
Please, and thank you. I've included the information here for you.
One second. Motion by Leah, seconded by Carly, to approve the settlement offer for government and any claims against Altria. Is there any other questions or discussions? All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Letter E, Sarah Stravka, first reading, consider removal of Policy 336 less than flying.
Hello, everybody. As you know, we review policies from WASB's recommendations, and the recommendation for this policy is that it really isn't necessarily, it really shouldn't be a policy. It would rather be more of an administrative regulation or something that we would place in a future version of our Staff Resource Guide. So, based on that recommendation, we, the Education Committee, discussed it, and then we made the recommendation for the full board's review of this policy to remove it as a policy and place information in our Staff Resource Guide.
Any questions for Sarah? Oh, go ahead.
I have just one thing, Sarah. Number one right there talks about at least sixty-five years old, or is at least fifty-five years old? Number one right there talks about at least 65 years old, or is it at least 55 years old?
That's the next one.
I'm sorry.
But we can talk about that when we get there.
I'm so sorry.
And like, oh, no.
We'll continue.
So, do you want to make a motion to approve this?
Would someone like to make?
I would, I would move to approve this.
Second.
Motion by Joel, seconded by Rod, to approve removal of Policy 336, the less than plans policy. All those in favor, please. Oh, yes, first reading, it's roll call vote. Joel?
Aye.
Rod? Leah?
Yes.
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And I am also a yes.
Thank you.
First reading, consider revisions to Policy 345.64, issuance of diplomas to veterans who left school to join military.
Not a big guy.
And again, I apologize.
It's okay.
It's a number one here, at least 65 years old, or at least 55 years old, and service or connected disability. Would there be any pushback if we just said 55? Or I guess, how did we come to those pages?
I do have an answer to that, that was the original policy language. It wasn't flagged for any reason during the review. I'm trying to think date-wise and get back.
2013? It was adopted in 2000?
It does say set forth in statute.
Right.
So I assumed that those four things were part of statute?
Correct, they were.
And that's where the really bad language came from, because that's what we like to put in statute.
Thank you for dropping it, Maria. I should look back at the statute and just pull almost whatever word.
I have a question.
Is the wartime part part of statute, and what defines during wartime periods?
I would think Congress would.
Like, would they say like an official, okay. So if they ditch out right now, we're not in a wartime period, and they go join up, they don't qualify per our, per our policy.
Correct, because we're not in an official war at this point.
But we'll talk about what they recommend. Any changes?
Go for it.
Okay. So, we had to update some legal statutes, and then inclusion of the posthumously awarding a diploma to a veteran, certain conditions in the policy were met, and that goes back to statutes. We didn't have that language in there, and that's what's in purple right now, so that's the change there, it's a plus to, with the statute language as well. Otherwise, the rest of the policy is intact, as the original.
I have more questions. How can a veteran send us a letter if they are since deceased? Shouldn't it say veterans, or their, or someone, like, or?
Representative.
Or, you write someone on there, because if they passed away, they can't really send us a letter. Yes.
Can I make a adjustment? You love it.
It's my favorite. They said we stopped at work now all the time.
Do you all agree veterans or their representative, like Adam said? That's fine. Then we don't have to say family or?
Right.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Rod's allergic to us.
I must be allergic to something.
Probably.
Motion to approve with changes.
One second. Motion by Leah, seconded by Carly, to approve the revision to Policy 345.64 with the revisions. It's also a first reading, so roll call.
Please.
Joel?
Yes.
Rod?
Aye.
Leah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you, Sarah. Number eight, citizens' comments. Are there any additional citizens' comments?
Do I need to sign them?
You can right now.
I can go, I mean, yeah. This is more my level of.
Our school.
I would just like to make two points quickly. The first is that last spring, I had the opportunity and the pleasure to have one of our board members on a field trip with me, and Jim, I hope you don't mind identifying you, and you made some really nice comments about how impressive the students of Mount Horeb are, and what great things our students do. That doesn't happen in a vacuum. It takes teachers with, alongside, and behind students for those kinds of things to happen. And we've lost some teachers who've done some really impressive things with students over the past few years. I'm thinking in particular of Aaron Tretter, who did work with NASA with students, and has since left us for a neighboring district. So, I just hope that when you think about the great things that kids in this district do, you keep in mind who's helping them to do those things. Second thing I wanted to point out is that I'm a second career teacher, a lot of you know that, and it was a, it was a big career move for me to do this. I do it because I love it. When I started, I'm in my fourth year now, I had seven years of experience with the district as a sub, I had two bachelor's degrees and a master's degree, and I came in at the very bottom of the pay scale, just like someone fresh out of college. So, all of my years of maturity and the things that I bring to the district as someone who's a second career teacher, those were not recognized in terms of compensation, and I think that makes it harder for someone who might think about being a second career teacher to do something like this. So I would hope that in the future, that sort of experience and degrees and those sorts of things could be included in the pay scale in some fashion. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Damon Piscatelli, I live at 509 Lucky Trail, Mount Horeb. She's the teacher. We have two sons who are graduates. I have 28 years of classroom experience, I'm no longer a teacher. In that 28 years, I served nine years as negotiator, three years as union president, I served four years on the school board. So, I feel like I'm not an expert in things like aptent, but I feel I can hold my own in a conversation about them, I guess. And I'm shocked most of all at the discord, because it's not about the amount of money. Like, I don't hear one side saying, "We'll give you 6%," and the other side say, "No, we want 8%." It's a weird argument to me that I've never heard before, and that it seems like we're arguing about a definition, or maybe, maybe a philosophy, that for some reason, there's a discrepancy in what the two sides want to use as a definition, and it's unclear why there's a difference. And as a kind of an outsider, but not really, it's very confusing to me. I would love to be some kind of fly on the wall, and the conversations are involved in the process, because I find it fascinating, but I guess my concern is that it's a PR nightmare, that even if somehow the board just can force through something, there's still going to be an argument later about, "It was an 8% package." No, it wasn't an 8% package. Yes, it was. No, it wasn't. And that worries me, because it'll just drag on forever. So I guess I'm concerned that there aren't reasons why something's being done away as shared, and I would just encourage everybody, including the teacher side, to be as transparent as possible and not hide behind statutes, or laws, or WRC representatives. If somebody has a decision, own it, stand up to it, give your reasons for it, and see what happens. If you can't own it and give your reasons for it, then that's a sign you probably need to go back and rethink about what the decision is. So, I, again, as having some experience with this, I really appreciate all your time and energy, and I do know how much it takes, and I wish nothing but the best for both sides. And I volunteer to help in any way I can, but I have a feeling I'm at a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Number nine, future agenda items. If there's something you would like to discuss, please let Dr. Slurnow know. Number 10, schedule of meeting, schedule of our next meetings. Anything in particular to note?
Yes, please. Just a friendly reminder that we will not be meeting on our typical third Monday of the month. As Board Member Myers had mentioned, we're waiting on the state aid to be provided to us on October 13th, which necessitates some time for us to gather all that and establish our levies and the like. So we'll be meeting on October 23rd, which is three weeks from tonight.
Good question. It says our community legislative is going to be virtually at 5:30. If we're going to be here at 7:00?
Yeah.
Are we going to meet virtually at 5:30 and then come here at 7:00?
We can do whatever you'd like.
Or can we be here?
We can be here.
I would prefer to come here, because if I go virtually, then I'm like rushed to get there.
Why don't we maybe move our, if it's okay with you, could we move our community legislative to 6 o'clock? Because otherwise, there'll be a half hour of time that we'd be hanging around.
That's fine, I mean.
Okay. So kale at 6, and then full board meeting at 7. Thanks for the suggestion.
Number 11, closed session. Contemplated closed session per section 19.85 (1E), deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public businesses. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, to wit MHA bargaining. Someone like to make a motion to move to closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Rod, to move to closed section. Roll call vote. Joel?
Aye.
Rod?
Aye.
Leah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
I am also a yes. Do you want to go right now, or you would like to?
Let's take five minutes so that.
Okay, five minutes.